It's a call was meeting in order, please stand for the place of allegiance. Uh, the United States.
And Republic, from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every just as well.
Roll over budget presentation.
Good evening and welcome to the first of our budget season. Once again, we're going to talk about our rollover budget. We're going to start with the 2021 budget and see where we're going to wind up for our initial 2122 budget information. So on our agenda tonight, we're going to talk about what is a rollover budget? Some of our known budgetary increases. And then we're going to do an overall of the budgetary view of where we are. So every year I like to start out reminding everyone, and I put the verbiage in great detail on here, but I'm not going to read the screen. I'm going to tell you in essence, what a rollover budget is. You start with your 2021 budget. To that, you add any known increases and expectations. And then you compare that to the 2021 revenue to see how much you have to either cut in expenditures or increase in revenues in order to obtain a balanced budget. So this is the starting point for Eden's budget process. So right now, some of our known budgetary increases. We have an enrollment increase again. We had it last year in the fourth grade this year, they're moving up to the fifth grade. So we're going to add a fifth grade teacher because our classrooms just cannot, if their current size cannot handle the additional students. And we're going to look at what our salary and benefit increases are. We're going to look at our projected BOSI's increases, our projected utility costs and our liability insurance. These are all anticipated increases and they will be finalized as we work through the budget process. So our contractual salary increases, which includes our new hires, including the expectation of a fifth grade teacher, are at 5.07% for the 2122 school year increase over this year. So on top of that, we expect our health insurance premiums, which typically health insurance goes up every year. We're hoping for a 10% increase. We're waiting to hear, I will have some sort of answer in the next month or so. Our teacher retirement system is a mandated cost. It goes from 8.86% to 9.53% or a 0.93% increase. Our employment retirement system, this is for our support staff. It's going from 15.8% to 16.2%, up 0.98%. The district really has no control over these cost increases. We're anticipating our BOSI's cost to go up 5%. This includes not only the increases in the BOSI's, but some of the services that we know we'll need. We took a lot of softwares to our BOSI's this year in an effort to do virtual schooling. So those costs will be recurring again, and they may not have been in the last year's budget. Utilities anticipation is 5% increase and liability insurance, again, another 5% increase. And I'm waiting to hear back from our vendors on what our actual increases will be. I want to talk a little bit about the utilities because utilities for a school district are not quite the same as they are in your home. We belong to a school and municipal energy consortium. Our consortium combines school districts and municipalities and we go out on the commodities market and we purchase our electric and our natural gas. Then we pay a transportation cost to the national grid and to national field to bring those reduced cost commodities to our district for, for you heating and running the electricity for the buildings. So those costs at 5% are conservative because we're able to take advantage of locking in price guarantees, hedging things and sorts that the average homeowner cannot. So that's why you'll see different percentages for school districts than you actually see in your own personal budget. So now I'd like to get into some of the detail of the budget. Excuse me a moment while I minimize so I can see my screen, thank you. So we're going to start with general support, the Board of Education. You're like, wait a minute, do we pay the Board of Education members? No, we do not. But who we do pay is the district clerk. We do pay liability insurance for the Board of Education. We do pay for mandatory New York State training anytime there was one issue that's mandatory. So our costs are projected to go from 23,000 to roughly 24,000 next year. A $946 increase or 4.08%. Again, some of these terminologies, I'm certain many people are not familiar with. Central administration is the district office. And in central administration, you have other costs other than just staffing. So you have the district office going from 281,000 to approximately 308,000 or $27,000 increase for 9.78% increase. Finance, that's the business office. That's our financial advisor. That's our audits that we're mandated to have. These are all these costs that are rolled into here. Going from 440,000 to 453,000, about a $13,000 increase or 2.97%. Legal personnel and public services. Like any business, the district has legal costs and we have to hire people and so we have personnel costs. And public services is things like the costs that are for maintaining our Facebook page and working on that. We hire someone from BOSI's to come once a week to come in to assist with that rather than hiring a person full time. We also print any flyers, calendars, things like that go through this line item. So they're going from 128,000 to 130,000. A little over $2,000 increase or 1.68%. Central services. Central services in essence are mostly our buildings and grounds and our utilities. They go from 2.5 million to 2.6 million or up 75,000, a 2.92% increase. Special items, this is where our liability insurances, most of them are in here. And then there's other expenses like refund of property taxes and different little miscellaneous items that are in here. And so we're expecting those to go from 460,000 to 469,000, a little over $9,000 increase or 2.2%. 2.02%. So our subtotal of our general support and general support is all the non-classroom things. So it's going from 3.9 million to a little over 4 million or 128,000 dollar increase at 3.28%. Now we're looking at the most critical part of our mission, instructional. Administrative and improvements. Administrative and improvement, it includes curriculum, professional development, and all the building principals and their staffs in their offices, which is going from 1,041,000 to 1,078,000, approximately an increase of $36,000 or 3.52%. The next three lines are where the bulk of our work is done. Teaching regular school, that's for the teaching that goes on for the students who attend Eden Elementary, the GLP and the high, middle school, high school. It's going from 8.2 million to 8.5 million, $309,000 increase or 3.75%. Programs for students with disabilities, those are our special ed students, our English language learner students. It's going from 3.4 million to 3.9 million, a 500,000 or a 14.67% increase. Those are due to the needs that our students of our more rural population need in within our district. Occupational education, this one's kind of an interesting one. This is where our kids go to BOSI's to learn how to be, they go take the cosmetology course, they go take DISA mechanics. And we've had an increased enrollment, so we're going from 704,000 to 876,000 dollars, 171,000 dollar increase or 24.33% increase. Predominantly due to enrollment increase as our students are trying to be career and college ready when they leave our doors. Teaching special schools. Our teaching special schools is our continuing education program, which includes our morning program that happens here at Eden Elementary and the GLP. Our sincerest hope is we will be back to a more normalized instructional day and so students will be coming here again. And we do receive some revenue, which we're not going to speak about tonight because we, remember, we said we were just going to look at expenses and compare them to last year's revenues. So they're going from 33,000 to 34,000, approximately $630 or 1.87% increase. Next, we're going to talk about our school library and audiovisual. Audiovisual is kind of a misnomer because it also includes our IT department, which we're all familiar with. And as our students went into more remote learning, more hands-on, as our district has increased one-to-one initiatives, we've gone from last year's budget of 869,000 down to 858,000 this year. There was some consolidation of services. There was also a reduction of a position in the IT department. So our overall cost savings is a little over 10, a little under $11,000 or 1.2% decrease. Pupil services, what's that? Well, pupil services is everything from your guidance counselors in the high school, your social workers in all the buildings, to the musical, the talent show here in Eden Elementary, to our sports. And they're going from 869,000, or pardon me, 1.6 million to 1.7 million, a $45,000 increase, approximately 2.74%.
Is there a reason why those are underlined?
Pardon me?
Why are those figures underlined?
Because they are underlined because they are now being totaled. Just like when you do a math problem. So administrative, teaching regular school programs with students with disability, occupational education, teaching special schools, school library and audio video, and pupil services subtotal in instruction to 16 million last year and a little over 17 million this year. A million 58,000 increase or 6.61%. Does that answer your question?
As I'm a math teacher and I just miss that.
Yeah, okay. Pupil transportation. This budget that was adopted in 2021, I want to point out, this was a budget that was adopted in July of 2020. The significance of that is when you see that there's $2.3 million for pupil transportation, we were unaware of what to anticipate in a COVID world for transportation. We were not sure if we had to have a monitor on every bus. We were not sure how long, how many bus runs we would have to do to bring the students in. So we put money in here to make sure that if when we were able to open schools, we could afford to run the buses for whatever we needed for the mission. So looking for either a hybrid in the 2122 school year or a more return to school, our hope, we're looking for a more traditional cost. So we're reducing those costs that we just inflated the one year just in case we were going to need them. They're going to reduce by $435,000 to 1.8 million or an 18.72% decrease from the prior year. Now we're going to talk about what I've just labeled as undistributed. I call it undistributed because where we had our general support and our instructional, these are not ever included in the lines above. So this is a separate category of items that never get distributed or broken out between support staff and educational. So we have civic activities. This includes, if we can all remember back a year, to our fitness center and staffing it so that the public would be welcome in. It's when we have somebody come in and run our facilities to use our auditoriums or our fields. And it's to pay for the staffing that we will, may or may not charge depending on what level they're at. So because minimum wage has increased, we're looking for a thousand dollar increase or 3.55% increase in those anticipated costs. Excuse me a moment. Now we're going to talk about employee benefits. Employee benefits are not what everyone will think of as a purpose necessarily. They are the retirement costs, the health insurance costs. They are the federal, the FICA for social security and Medicare costs that the district is required to pay. They're going from 6.4 million to 7.1 million, up $769,000 or 12%. Remember, we talked and embedded in this number was the increase in the TRS rates, the increase in the employee retirement system rates, the increase in health insurance. That's what's embedded in this number. Now we're looking at our debt service. What is debt service? Are we in debt? Of course we are. We have a mortgage payment, the same as most homeowners do. So last year, our mortgage payments were anticipated to be 2.4 million. And this year, we're expecting them to go up 208,000 to 2.6 million or an 8.59% increase. Interfund transfer has got to be one of the most confusing jargon words I use. It's an accounting move where we transfer money from the general fund into other funds. For example, we ask every year in, as part of the budget, for the taxpayer, the community to approve $100,000, what we call capital outlay project. The capital outlay project for $100,000 will have a return next year in revenue of $78,200 from New York State. So what that means is when we put in the new ceilings that we just did over at the high school during break, the high school, middle school, those ceilings, we will get 78.2% of their cost and all that work that was done over there back from New York State as part of our revenues for the 2122 school year when we look at those in detail. So the other costs that are in there is every year we're required to pay 20% of our summer school for our special education students. Special education students are our population that need extra supports. The criteria for coming to summer school during special education is that you would have to fall behind if you were out of school for the entire summer. So New York State pays 80% of those costs and the local taxpayers pay 20%. The other item that's included in interfund transfers is our cafeteria. Every year, our cafeteria, because we're keeping prices affordable for families so they have an option to send their kids to school to pick up lunch here in a normal school year, where we are not receiving free lunches for everyone. We then have costs that the price of our lunches just don't cover. With the increase in food costs, the increase in minimum wage that occurs every year, our cleaning of the cafeterias, all those things. So we do an interfund transfer where we take some of the taxpayers' funds and we support the cafeteria program so we can continue to offer a cafeteria program for our students. So we started out with, as we said in the beginning, our adopted 2021 budget of 31.2 million. We're looking at, just in our estimated known increases, a 5.65% increase or 1,769,077 dollars to a little over a $33 million expenditure. This is the beginning of the budget work. So now as promised, we're going to compare that. If we didn't receive another penny, what do we have to do? What is our gap? And we have a gap to fill every year. It's filled by increases in property taxes and it's filled with additional state aid. So we're going to start out with saying, if we had the same dollars we anticipated for 2021, 31,285,337 dollars. And we were to spend everything that is here in the budget at this time, 33,054,414 dollars. What do we have to do to have a balanced budget? We have to fill this gap of 1,769,077 dollars. Now I want to talk to you about our budget calendar, which is a little different than it's been in past years. And a lot of that difference is the COVID pandemic that we're all experiencing. So we're going to look at, instead of having multiple meetings per month, because quite frankly, as you see, we don't have a lot of attendance here. And we don't want to encourage bad pandemic behaviors. So on February 10th at 7:00 PM, as part of the board meeting, we will do it, I will do an updated budget presentation similar to what you've seen tonight. On March 1st, I have to send New York State our property tax calculation. And one of the figures that is used for that calculation is the consumer price index. That is one of a couple of figures used in the calculation, seven step calculation. And for the 2122 school year, that will be 1.23% as a growth factor compared with the 2021, which is 1.81%. And currently under the tax law, it cannot exceed 2% in any given year. So it's going to be a tight budget season. So as we're working through it, you will see that we need to do things to fit within our needs, just like you do in your home budgets. So on March 17th, there will be a 7:00 PM board meeting. And in that board meeting will be another presentation update from the 10th of February to the 17th of March. On March 24th, we're going to attempt, we're going to have a budget workshop. We are hopeful that we will be able to invite more of the community to come in and be active participants in person, but we'll have to wait and see how things are going. On March 31st, the New York State budget is supposed to be adopted. And then we will receive legislative runs, which will be the final amount of state aid that the district will be receiving. On April 20th, we will have a 7:00 PM board meeting with a tentative budget adoption. And the budget adoption will be one of the three scenarios that will be presented at the budget workshop. And then on the 21st, this is, it's called the New York State Property Tax Report Card I have to submit to New York State so they know what our plans are. On May 4th, will be a public hearing at 7:00 PM. On May 18th will be the budget vote. And it is our hope, I'm sincerest hope, that it will be in person at the middle school, high school auditorium entrance between 9:00 AM and 9:00 PM. Are there any questions from the board?
Thank you.
This concludes my presentation.
Request to withdraw specific guidance from consent agenda? All right, so if we, now if we go to B, this is what you want, Cheryl, B. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
This is the approximate position and time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate the representation status. For example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There's a two-minute time limit.
I did not receive any comments or questions.
Okay, then moving along. New business. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of bus driver Joseph Villafranca be accepted effective December 11th, 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Director of Technology, Lucinda Karstedt, be accepted effective July 19th, 2021. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Karstedt for her 22 years of service to the district.
Second.
Any discussion? I'd like to thank Lucinda from getting us from the 56K bod modem rate into distance, remote learning pretty seamlessly. So Lucinda, thank you so much. You, you overcame a ton of challenges over the years to put us in a position to basically teach remotely in the middle of a pandemic. So thank you from the, from the board for a job well done from piece and modems together to where we're currently at. Thank you.
I second that, Lucinda. Good job. Thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Congratulations, Lucinda. Thank you.
Congratulations and joy. Now to new business, appointments of Marinella, that one. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Maria Marinella be appointed on probation as a teacher aide effective January 21st, 2021 and ending June 20th, 2021. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level for step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the attached list of books from the GLP library be declared accessed and disposed of as the district seems, deems appropriate.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following buses be declared accessed. Each bus will be offered for sale through auctions international or similar means. Should the district be unable to obtain a higher value than originally offered by Matthew's bus, the vendor has agreed to purchase the buses at the originally agreed upon trade price. And I don't have to read all those, do I?
Nope.
Second.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, bus route changes be adjusted January 8th, 2021 as per the attached.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Consolidated Appropriation Act of 2021, which provides employers with additional options to amend their FSA accounts and provide relief to employees during the COVID-19 outbreak, be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a motion be approved authorizing the district to undertake the first component of an approved two-part 2022 of an approved two-part twenty-twenty-two capital improvement project, the Proposition Number One Project, consisting of the reconstruction, rehabilitation, and renovation of, and the construction of improvements and upgrades to various district buildings and facilities and the sites thereof, all at an estimated maximum cost of twelve million, five-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars. To expend or apply toward the Proposition Number One Project, three million, three-hundred-thousand dollars from the district's capital reserve fund and to issue serial bonds or other obligations of the district in aggregate principal amount not to exceed nine million, two-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars to finance the balance of the estimated maximum cost of the Proposition Number One Project and delegating the power to issue bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the sale of such obligations to the President of the Board of Education of the District.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a bond resolution dated January twentieth, twenty-twenty-one of the Board of Education of the Eden Central School District, Erie County, New York, the District, authorizing the District to undertake the second component of an approved two-part twenty-twenty-two capital improvement project, Proposition Number Two Project, consisting of certain additional health, safety, technology, and recreational upgrades to various district buildings and facilities and the sites thereof, all at an estimated maximum cost of three million, two-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety dollars and to issue serial bonds of, or other obligations of the district in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed three million, two-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety dollars to finance the estimated maximum cost of the Proposition Number Two Project and delegating the power to issue bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the sale of such obligations to the President of the Board of Education of the District be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school calendar be amended as follows. Monday, February first, twenty-twenty-one, half-staff development day be moved to Wednesday, February third, twenty-twenty-one. Friday, March fifth, twenty-twenty-one, half superintendent conference day for grades nine through twelve be moved to Wednesday, March third, twenty-twenty-one. Friday, March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one, half-staff development day be moved to Wednesday, March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
Any discussion?
If I may, Mr. Sutford, um, I would like to make a slight adjustment to this recommendation based on, uh, some additional information, uh, that was discussed today. And that's that Friday, March fifth, uh, half superintendent conference day for grade levels nine through twelve. Rather than move that to March third, it's my, my updated recommend, recommendation to actually cancel that superintendent day and just make, uh, that, that Friday a regular day of instruction and leave that Wednesday as a remote day, um, as it currently is in our hybrid model. I apologize to the board. I had every intent of sending some information out to you later, uh, late this afternoon, um, once we, we came to, to this conclusion. So that's my fault that you didn't get this information beforehand. But just to give you a little bit of information, um, Mr. Servoni and Mr. Lyons are with us tonight in the audience. And I had them, uh, meet with their department chairs, um, talked with, uh, Ms. LaRosa, our, our, who coordinates our staff development. And really with all, all of that, that brain power put together, we really couldn't figure out why this day was planned as it was in the calendar originally. And I say that because we don't really have nine through twelve teachers in our district. We have so many shared staff between the middle school and the high school that in order to, to have a staff development or a superintendent conference day, uh, uh, for just nine through twelve, we would either, um, need to bring in an awful lot of substitute teachers to cover those classes in the middle school, or we would have to make a seven through twelve day. We didn't have a solid plan, um, for that day at this point. And, you know, reaching out to some of the folks that could have been presenting, uh, on that day, they, they certainly weren't available on the third as well. So in consulting with, uh, all the professionals involved, it's, it's my recommendation to, um, cancel that day. But I also want to say as well that, um, moving these half-days from a, a student instructional day to a Wednesday was not done lightly. And it's certainly done with full respect of all the work that our teaching staff is, is doing on Wednesdays and, um, reaching out to students and, um, recording their videos and, and really, um, using that, those days as, as they best can. But in the end, the, the thought of, um, reducing instructional time, um, just really wasn't on the docket. So it wa, it, it's with appreciation, but certainly it was an easy decision to recommend that we move those days to Wednesday so that we can maximize the, the amount of time our students are, are in class.
Thanks, uh, thanks, Mr. Surtisio. I, I really appreciate you getting more face-to-face time and less, less screen time when we can. So, uh, moving those days makes complete sense. So, um, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Business report.
Hi, I received the governor's preliminary state aid runs earlier this morning. While I'm not prepared yet to talk in detail about the changes, I'd like to talk at a higher level about some concerning changes in the overall process that have occurred this year. Last year was the first time in the governor's runs that expense-driven aids were combined into a category, into one category. Expense-driven aids are where districts is reimbursed the following year for costs that happened in this year. The areas that they, governor has, uh, once again proposed to combine are our BOSIs, our transportation, hardware and software aid, textbooks, and library aid. BOSIs, Boards of Cooperative Extension Services, were designed to provide a cost sharing for districts so districts could afford things for their students that students wouldn't have access to if each district had to go out and hire staff. Perfect example of that is the occupational education programs that are going on for areas like visa mechanic and cosmetology. And so if districts send students there one year, we get an eight percentage back the following year to help us to combine services. My concerns are that, um, rural districts are going to be harmed with our transportation costs as well. They start to combine our transportation costs, we might not be able to maintain escalating costs that we have no control over due to the geographic location and the miles our buses drive every year under the New York State Property Tax Cap rules. Once again, the governor is attempting to combine these all into one line. And once again, I'm hoping that when we receive the legislative runs, they go back to their traditional status so that we can continue to estimate what, where our costs are and what our reimbursements will be. I have some more good and bad news. This is kind of how the whole scenario is going to go. Last year's pandemic adjustment of one-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars is gone. That's good news. Unfortunately, it's been repriced by a reduction called Local District Funding Adjustment. For Eden, that amount is one million, two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars deduct from our state aid, which, when I look further down, will be replenished if New York State receives sufficient funds from the federal government as COVID-nineteen stimulus money. At this point in time, no one knows quite what the plans are for that. Again, these are the governor's runs and the legislature has oftentimes different ideas and they restore funding. So just things to be aware of, things that we need to start thinking about when we're talking about, um, you know, our agendas for the public meetings. New this year, which concerns me, is the STAR aid that homeowners receive on their property taxes is listed separately. It's never been on the state aid runs before. In July of two thousand and nineteen, all new homeowners, or those not registered in the STAR program, would not, do not receive a credit on their tax bill before they pay it. Instead, they must pay their tax bill in full and they get a refund check sent directly to their homes. So with that change that occurred in two thousand and nineteen, New York State went from paying approximately seven hundred districts to paying all the individual homeowners a credit back after, on their property taxes. I have concerns because I don't really know why all of a sudden this is being added to the state aid proposals from the governor, why we're suddenly looking at that when we build a budget, we come up with a total eleven-dollar amount and then STAR reduces that by the applications that our taxpayers have placed. So I have concerns about that. So I just wanted to let you know those were the areas that I feel are different and something we should be aware of as we're going through the budget process. And then the last thing I wanted to once again state was the Consumer Price Index percentage utilized for the New York State Property Tax calculation has been released at one-point-two-three percent, and that's down from one-point-eight-one percent last year. And that's everything that I have for this evening. Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Okay, I have a few things I want to, I want to go over, and I'm going to start with our return to school. Um, on January fourth, we returned our students to the hybrid model of instruction. And you will recall that prior to winter recess, Eden, like many schools in Western New York, was in a full remote instructional model because of the Orange Designation. Of course, much has changed since that time. The return of students required our, um, the advent of our on-campus testing program and even the nuances of, of the Orange Designation have been adjusted. And we look forward to the day when we are no longer in a designated area. Under the Orange Designation, in order to have children in school, even in a hybrid model, we're required to test twenty percent of staff and students who are on campus each month. And that regulation, uh, further states that we can test no more than ten percent bi-weekly. I know we've sent out some communication and even some, some photographs and some videos of our testing program, but I thought it was important to go over where we are, uh, as of today. To date, we've tested one-hundred-and-eighty staff and students district-wide. That breaks down to seventeen students and twenty-seven staff at GLP, sixteen students and twenty-three staff at Eden Elementary, and thirty-five students and sixty-one staff at the middle school, high school. Of those hundred-and-eighty tests, we've had one positive test. Um, and you can say that, that the testing program worked because it identified a, a staff or student member who was asymptomatic, uh, yet tested positive, and they were referred for further medical follow-up and are in good hands at this time. You'll notice that our staff, uh, included in staff are anybody who works here, meaning teachers and support staff, administrators, et cetera. Those numbers are significantly higher than our students at this point because we had, uh, an extra staff testing day this, today, as compared to students because we were not in session on Monday. Our next student testing day will be Friday. We're testing students on Mondays and Fridays. Uh, I do want to thank, um, Mary Maxon for organizing our testing program, Jordan Edwards, who is our brand-new nurse at GLP for administering the tests, and Ashley Waldorf, uh, from the business office for processing the state reports. Those three have really been, uh, the lead. There's been an awful lot of other folks who, who have assisted along the way, and I'm very appreciative of, of those efforts. A special thank you to the families and the students who consented to be part of our testing program, as well as the staff members who are partaking in, uh, testing as well. Any questions about return to school or our on-campus testing program at this point? Okay. So moving on, this past Tuesday, we had an initial kickoff meeting for Capital Project twenty-twenty-two. We were joined by members of Young and Right and Campus Construction. The topics of discussion were really initial timelines and planning for the design phase of the project. As we get, get closer to scheduling, um, when I say scheduling, I'm talking about end-user groups to really, uh, get into some deep-level discussions about different components to the project and what they may look like and, um, and those folks who are directly affected. Uh, I do want to extend an invitation to any member of the Board of Education to participate in this phase of the project. For example, if you have a particular interest in, in part of the project and you'd like to be included in, in discussions about design elements, then just please let me know and I'll be sure to include you. Okay? And I know you're, you're well-versed in the different, uh, elements of the project, but I'm certainly open to conversation with any of you, um, at, at your convenience. I do want to talk about budget a little bit. Uh, first off, I want, I want to thank Laura Feldman for her immense patience as she teaches me about the, the history of Eden's budget process and does her best to, to make sure I am as well-educated as possible about, uh, where we're heading in the future. She's certainly, uh, a wealth of knowledge and I appreciate her imparting some of that on me. I do want the board to know that Laura and I are taking a very hands-on approach to the budget. I know I've mentioned this before, um, but just so you're aware again, we will be meeting with every person that oversees a budget in our district and really going line by line. That's the best way for me to have a deep understanding of, of the budget process here and what the needs are. And ultimately, the goal is, is that the budgets that are presented to this board in the future are fully vetted and support the instructional program and are certainly are fair to local taxpayers. Any questions about that? All right. You, um, you will continue to hear that we are examining, uh, additional instructional opportunities. Mr. Sutford, thank you for those positive comments about maximizing class time for our students. Our building-level implementation teams are hard at work trying to determine what are those things that we need to do or, or accomplish before we can bring students back, um, more than they are right now. Ultimately, our goal is to have all of our students back five days a week, but we know we're a ways, uh, ways away from, uh, being able to do that. There are some schools, uh, in our area that are doing, you know, very similar things in term, in terms of the examination of what we can do. Uh, our limitations are really based on, uh, the size of some of our classrooms. But our, our teachers and our administrators and our support staff are really taking a hard look at what are those things that we can do and, and should we do in order to have children in schools more often. Uh, and, and at this point, my comments to the administrative team is we need to plan for this because eventually it's going to happen, and if we don't plan for it, we won't be ready. So let's, let's be forward-thinking and, um, really do all we can to return our students to the classroom. Moving on, uh, I have a meeting tomorrow with, uh, the leadership of the different units, uh, in the, in the district to talk about next year's calendar. Um, this is a tact that, that I've taken in, in previous work, work on the calendar, really to ascertain what are those things that are important to, uh, the community and to, and the community who works here when we start examining, uh, the next school calendar. Uh, we do have the Western New York Regional Calendar as a model. I imagine that, uh, the, the calendar that's presented to the board, um, for your consideration will look pretty similar to that. Uh, again, I encourage, uh, board members, if you have some thoughts, uh, needs or concerns about, about the school calendar, either, uh, our current calendar or future calendar, to please communicate that with me. Uh, and my goal is to have, um, have a recommendation to you at our next board meeting. Any questions or comments for me?
None here.
Thank you.
Student report.
All righty, um, so, um, I'm Caleb, Vice President of Student Council. And, um, as far as on the student side of things goes, we are, um, happy to return to hybrid from, uh, full remote. So we're excited to kind of, um, get back into, um, classes, just, um, taking that step toward, um, hopefully one day, being all together again, uh, five days a week, um, all together. So we're excited, uh, for that. And as far as student council, um, we are, um, planning and trying to plan ju, just some, uh, COVID-friendly type events, including the week before, um, the week before winter break. We're looking to do what I'm just calling a winter spirit week, which is just two dress-up days, uh, where, uh, students will be able to dress up and, uh, certain things that we have. And then we're going to members of the each-class o, office, so. so freshmen to senior class office will be decorating a hallway wing to do a specific decoration thing, just to give the kids something to look forward to and do just like we would do in a normal year, just with a little COVID twist on that. So yeah, that's just kind of what's going on in our end. Kaylee is in place for Abby today. Do you have anything to add?
Well, I think you covered everything. Thank you.
Awesome. So unless you guys have questions, that is that report.
Thank you, Caleb. Board report roundtable.
I just got one thing, and it kind of goes back to, if you've been listening to our county executive pulling cards, you know, being treated fairly by the state. If you track any of the numbers that are coming out of Erie County Health Department, Eden is at probably the lowest per hundred thousand capita COVID rate in all of Erie County right now. So just kind of jumping on, county executive pulling cards's statements is, you know, let's treat us fair as districts. I don't even know if we should even be in a yellow zone right now based on where our rates are at within the Eden community. We're at twenty-one point one back in November when we went in the orange zone. We were, you know, we deserved to go in the orange zone at that point in time. But, you know, at this point in time, I believe Eden should be out of the orange and yellow zone and put in no zone if we're being treated fairly per numbers and stuff like that. So that's just my statement, you know, from the school board that, you know, hey, let's reexamine some things and treat people fairly for what they've been doing. So and I believe, Jeff, if I'm correct, if we're out of the yellow zone, we don't have to test anymore.
Yeah, you're correct. In the yellow zone, if you, once you test twenty percent of your populace, if you are below the regional rate, then you no longer have to continue testing. So our friends in North Collins are in that situation right now.
So the regional, so we're at point five percent. And I think the regional rate's somewhere around six right now. So I would have no problem believing that we would test out of it as well, too, so.
So what would be the next move to approach that? Like, who do you contact, or what do you have to do for that?
Good luck, Cheryl. I don't know.
I mean, it's been all over the news, and I mean, Don, it's a good point that you brought up because I was, from a different end, I was curious about the districts that are falling in those regions that are at twelve percent. Like, I have friends who work in areas that are much higher than us, and it's just a different, I don't, I can't really say for certain that the stories that they're telling me are true, but it just seems way less restrictive than what we're experiencing here. One thing that I did read is that even if, like, we have to, our rates have to be so low for so many consecutive days, however, my understanding is the governor still has the authority, based on hospitalization rates, to still maintain those colored zones, even if our rate of positivity is far below what it needs to be. So it seems that, yes, there is this threshold, but then there's this caveat that, well, I'll just make the decision based on hospitalization rates. I mean...
Shocker.
Well, to me, it's like being put on, I don't know, what's it called, ISS? Or, you know, basically, you know, you know what, we're not going to look at it again until whenever. And that's what I feel, you know, the governor's done, is he pivoted off the percentages and pivoted to hospitalization, but hasn't gone back and cleaned his records out. So completely agree with you, Jen.
Yeah, but it is, Cheryl, I mean, it's all over the news. WBM, doing it, WGRZ's been talking about it. They interviewed Kathy Hochul. It's not as if it's not being discussed, it's just not being responded to, really.
Right.
I'm sure their focus is much more on the situation with the vaccination issues than it is with the colored designation. Now, we, as a school system, our neighbors are very similar to us in that we found a way to adjust, and we're moving forward. And, you know, we'll continue to do that because it means having kids in school. But everything that Don said is correct, and everything that you're saying, Jen, is correct as well, that they changed the rules on us and then forgot to reassess who they put in the penalty box when they made that call. It is frustrating, but we're making do. And, you know, if their focus on vaccines gets the vaccines to the people much quicker, and they're not looking at us in the penalty box, then I can live with that. So my fingers are crossed on that side of things.
That's all I have in regards to the board roundtable. Anybody else have anything else?
I just, my niece, who is a long-term sub at GLP over the holidays, you know, with keeping confidentiality, but she shares plans with me that she does, you know, because I always say, like, how's remote? How's the hybrid model working for you as a new teacher? And I got to tell you, the stuff that is coming out of GLP only because I have my niece there, the things that these teachers and aides and everybody is doing to, you know, service these children is amazing. I work with high school kids, so hearing the, you know, pre-K through two version of it is just, oh my, I was in tears on Christmas Day with what they did for Christmas and different things like that. And so kudos, and I'm sure the Eden Elementary and the high school are the same. So kudos to everyone involved that are keeping things real for our kids and addressing the issues, the good, the bad, and the ugly, and moving forward and doing a great job. So, thank you.
Anything else? Well, then, we enter into, oh, I'm sorry, the next regular Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, February tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at seven PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. Now enter into executive session. Could we do B? Nacinda? I don't need to read all that. Could we? Going to B? That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.